This is the time that we gather and talk about some items that we have come in before the town from a standpoint of, a lot of times it fills the gaps. And I know looking at the things we'll be talking about today has to do with affordable housing, which is, you know, a big, a big one for sure. We'll be talking about the non-discrimination ordinance. Library, you know, there's a lot of discussion about the libraries and hopefully we'll hear something about that. American Rescue Fund, Amy will give us a little update on that and then we'll have a discussion around the feasibility of the Granite Acres connection there. I think that's something Paul started on. I think, I think Sheila got involved in it at one point in time. So we'll finish up with that. So with that, Kelly, I'll turn it over to you for our first guest and-
I think Mayor Elsie would want to close session tonight after-
Yeah, I don't have it on the agenda, but that's what I heard Dave here somewhere.
He's gonna be right there.
Oh, he's on, okay, I see him.
I'm here.
He's remote.
So, yes, we're ready, prepared. Tonight, we have a discussion that we booked out about two months ago and we were gonna have Wake County Housing Affordability and Community Revitalization Director Lorena McDowell, but today she informed us that she is ill. So it takes two to replace her and she has brought Alicia Arnold and Mark Pearlman. I'll let them introduce themselves to do the presentation of what was in the packet and leave some conversation with you. So with that, I'll turn it over to you all.
Welcome.
Thank you. Pull up our slideshow here. And Lorena does leave some pretty big shoes to fill. Let me turn. There we go. Okay. Lorena does leave some pretty big shoes to fill, but we're happy to be able to pinch hit for her tonight. She was definitely not feeling well earlier this morning when I talked to her. So we will also be keeping her in our thoughts for a speedy recovery. So I am Alicia Arnold. I am the, one of the two deputy housing directors for Wake County. I'm over the operations side of the house, but I've been with the department for quite some time in various different capacities. And I'm joined tonight by Mark Pearlman, who is our Equitable Housing and Community Development Division Director. We seem to have very long names for all of our divisions and our department, but you can just call us the housing folks. And we're excited to be here tonight to talk to you a little bit about the overview of the housing market in general across Wake County and in the broader region, as well as what Wake County's Housing Department does. It's a little bit unique for a county to have a housing department, but we can go through all the different things of what we do, why we do it, and why we're here to kind of help all of our municipalities as we grow in the way that we're growing. We'll talk a little bit about the various different divisions in the Housing Department, talk a little bit about Roseville specific data, and then we're happy to answer any questions or take the discussion wherever you all would like to take it and what would be most helpful for you. So I want to start just by the baseline defining what we are talking about when we talk about affordable housing. So the General HUD definition, or U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, is that individuals are paying no more than 30% of their income on housing expenses. So that, it could be the rent, that could be the mortgage, that could be taxes, all of that. And when individuals are paying more than 30% of their income, they're considered cost burdened. Now, for someone who has higher income or more disposable resources, that may be a choice that they could make, but when somebody has less resources, oftentimes that eats into other critical things. The ability to purchase your medications, the ability to purchase food, the ability to have healthcare that's appropriate. And so we really look at that 30% as the industry standard of what affordability means. But otherwise, affordable housing is just like any other housing. It may be for rent to, or to own. It always should be safe and decent housing. It could come in any shape, size, or form. It could be single-family duplexes, cottage courts, anything in between. And we also always want to make sure that it's constructed and maintained to local housing standards. Oftentimes with affordable housing across Wake County, you would see no difference in that development versus any other development. Really, the only thing that's different is the financing on the back end. And who are we talking about to really put a face to who affordable housing serves? So we're talking about folks that have lower income or less resources in our community. This is very important jobs. These are our home health nurses. These are our retail associates, the people who support all of the economic development and the businesses that we're trying to attract our community. We're talking about our teachers, our firefighters, our law enforcement, and many other critical jobs that makes our community the place that has the high quality of life where people want to live. So as you can see here, these are some of the estimates of what individuals in these fields may earn within Wake County here. And it would, it tells you also what median income range that they would typically fall in and what rents would be affordable to those incomes. And so you can see here that if anyone's looked at Zillow or, you know, anywhere else lately, you'll see that these rents or these mortgage rates are much higher than what you would see on the screen. So people are cost burdened. It's also important to talk about why housing affordability is important. So it's important to the families and individuals that are directly benefited by it. Again, it fulfills that basic human need. It helps have disposable income for all of the other important pieces of someone's life, but it also helps with the community and it helps with businesses. So when thinking through economic development, businesses want to have, want to have a readily available stock of employees when they choose to move someplace. And so for that, it's important to have housing that's affordable for all the various different income ranges that economic development may be bringing to your community. Also, for the community impact, it's important not to have homelessness in your community. It creates diversity and it also helps to just make your community stronger and more vibrant. So I'm going to switch gears a little bit from kind of the level setting and talk about what housing affordability and trends in our community is looking like. And so there's five main things that are pointing towards us here in Wake County really having a housing affordability crisis. We are not the only ones in North Carolina having an affordability crisis. We are not the only ones in the nation having an affordability crisis. This is pretty, especially as inflation continues to increase, this is something we're seeing pretty much everywhere. First and foremost, we are growing and we are growing substantially. And so our rapid growth that we're experiencing and that we've experienced for quite some time now, as you can kind of see this chart here, is really putting pressure on the cost of both rental and ownership housing. To add on to that, incomes are not necessarily keeping pace with costs. So again, housing cost has increased substantially. You see here the dark blue line being the rental asking square foot. Price has increased 23% since 2009, but the median household income has only increased by 6%. So the gap between what people are able to purchase with their incomes is growing at a substantial pace. Again, those incomes are not keeping pace with escalating costs. So this is a little bit of an outdated chart, but what we're seeing is that hourly wage needed to afford a two-bedroom continues to separate in Wake County between the North Carolina amount and the Wake County amount. And then also, I just want to point out that on the market rent number there, so the 12,000, that's fair market rent. So that's what the U.S. government says that we should be getting for fair market rent. If you go and look on any of the websites, it's like $1,800 a month for a two-bedroom. So their statistics are certainly not keeping track with what we're actually seeing day to day in the market. But what you do see is that people are having to earn triple, quadruple minimum wage to be able to survive in this housing market. Meanwhile, a lot of places are still paying minimum wage. And so certainly, we have to either address the income piece to housing affordability or the affordability piece. We want to try to address both. The other piece is that our stock of housing is not keeping up with the pace that we're growing. So we have experienced substantial housing production, but it's still not enough housing production to keep up with the amount of growth that we're seeing. We also lost a lot of production throughout the Great Recession. So you can see that the bars between 2008 and 2012, we've just now got back up to what we were producing before that. And that's not making up for everything we didn't produce for those, those four years in between. And again, to add to that, we are losing units at affordable rates. So our existing housing stock is getting redeveloped, it's getting value-added, it's getting purchased and painted and adding some new laminate floors and the prices are getting jacked up. And so what you can see here is that our housing stock from 2010 to 2019, we've lost almost 20,000 units at, at or below $750 a month. And that's even more when you look at what we've lost, that's under $1,000 a month a rent. And then finally, our fifth trend is that ultimately, individuals that are making less than 50% of the area median income are largely unable to find affordable housing. And more than, the majority of them are spending more than half of their income on housing costs. So again, the metric really we like to see is less than 30%. What we're seeing is people are spending more than 30% and some more than 50% on that housing cost. Another point that I just want to point out, we don't have it in the slides here tonight, but on Wake County's housing page, we have an interactive dashboard that shows live data of overall growth statistics, housing statistics, and then housing affordability statistics. And in that, you'll see that ultimately, our total population of people that would be considered this kind of less than 50% median income is not changing, just the housing stock that would be affordable to them is drastically changing. Now, our metrics are getting extremely skewed because a lot of the people that are moving here are making well above the median income. And so that's also skewing things is because people with higher incomes are moving into the market, but the people who have had the incomes that have not necessarily increased are still kind of staying here and hanging on, but they are, they are very quickly going to be displaced. And that's something we don't want to see at all. And so that leads me to ultimately what, what it looks like in Wake County for displacement. And so the direct, there's a couple of different definitions of displacement, but direct displacement occurs when residents can no longer afford to remain in the homes that they have lived in. This could be due to rising housing costs, predatory acquisition, other things of that nature. But this is a map right here, it's a few years old at this point of 2018, but of evictions in Wake County. And so you can see that this is not something that is only happening in one area of the county. This is happening all across the county. And so people are unstable in their housing and they are being displaced from their housing. And so when we look more at who those people are, we know that persons of colors are disproportionately affected by displacement. Those who have less education, renters, people that are, households with children that are in poverty, those folks are the ones who are going to be first off and often seen displaced. And they can also be indirectly displaced or culturally displaced. So cultural displacement happens when your neighborhood changes around you and you no longer recognize the place where you're living. And maybe you're still there, but it doesn't look or feel like where you grew up. And then indirect displacement is when changing in who is actually moving into the neighborhood. So that may cause the cultural displacement. And again, so speaking about families with children that may be in poverty, this is what our school system is seeing as it relates to children who are experiencing homelessness throughout the school year. I will note that it looks like it went down in 2020, but as we know, COVID made it really hard to track statistics because children weren't actually going to school and they were reporting online. So a lot of times, it's hard to, to understand what's going on in that particular setting. But more than 4,000 children in our school system are experiencing homelessness annually. And if you think about that, every child has at least one parent, maybe more siblings. So that quickly doubles and triples that number to just show the magnitude of what's happening in our community. So that was kind of the depressing part of the presentation, the really eye-opening part of the presentation. I want to talk a little bit about why it's important for us to gather that data, to review that data frequently, and what we're trying to do about what we're seeing that's happening in the community. So a few years back, in September of 2016, we created an Affordable Housing Steering Committee, and we tried to have representation of subject matter experts, of general community members, of industry businesses, and really pulled together a brain trust of how do we look at this data and how do we create a roadmap for us to do something about it, something that's achievable. And in the 32 committee member group, which also had a lot of other folks that participated in the process outside of that, created the Wake County Affordable Housing Plan, which was ultimately approved in 2017. And we really wanted, from the very beginning of this process, not to have just a Wake County plan, but to have a community plan that anybody, any municipality, any organization or agency, any person in Wake County could pick up and could find something that they could do to action around affordable housing and providing affordability to folks. We had three essential strategy areas and we broke them down into further action steps from there. So our highest priority recommendations, there was ultimately, I believe, I want to say 18 different recommendations, these are the, the top priorities, fell into the categories of land use, leverage programs, and identifying new public resources. And so with that, we understand that we are, Wake County, we really have very limited control over land and land use directly. And so we knew that we would need to work with our municipal partners as it relates to land use strategies, policies, zoning permitting, to help increase affordability. And then we also knew that we needed to leverage all of the resources that we could get to create various different programs or strategies that help promote affordability and help preserve affordability across the county. And then we also looked at what public resources can we further commit to this, to these programs, both financial resources as well as non-financial resources, things that we could bring to the table that maybe we already had. And with this, the Wake County Board of Commissioners voted to increase our, our affordable housing budget at the county level by $15 million, which ultimately doubled our county's budget for affordable housing. And then they told us to go do all these things. So that's the fun part. So again, here, with that $15 million in new revenue, they wanted us to create 2,500 new units of affordable housing within five years. They wanted us to, we had a severe deficit of emergency shelter bed, first, shelter beds for single women or women without children. So they wanted us to create additional beds for that. And then they also wanted us to end veterans homelessness and implement pilot programming around permanent supportive housing. And also, in addition, in our comprehensive plan, we really wanted to focus it around ensuring that quality affordable housing was available for all Wake County residents. We wanted to make sure that if we were going to use taxpayer dollars, we're going to maximize the benefit from those resources, that we were going to focus on the populations that had the greatest need, that we were going to ultimately support overall housing growth. Because as we saw earlier, having housing stock at all levels ultimately helps the affordability, because people are able to move up to a different level of housing or people aren't competing, which drives up prices. We also wanted to pursue locally appropriate solutions. So in North Carolina, we can't do things that other states can do. And so there's no need to necessarily worry or try to implement that. We'll leave that to the lobbyists at the state level and other folks. What can we do now? And that was important to us. And then ultimately, always reminding ourselves that we're really using housing as an economic, a platform for economic opportunity. So this is not just about building things or creating things, or it's really about lifting people up and out of poverty, making sure people have better outcomes, that they have upward mobility. So out of the plan, in addition to the drastic increase in budget, the Wake County Affordable Housing Department was created. And so we've only been a department since 2018 and we've, we've very quickly grown. We started off with our three divisions of equitable housing, homeless and prevention services, and permanent housing and supportive services. From there, we, we ventured into needing someone to help us with all this research and data and systems to make sure everything's running smoothly in the program side. And then just recently, we were asked to take over veteran services for the county. And so veterans, the Veteran Services Office is coming over to the Housing Department as of what effective July 1, and we will be helping to, to serve veterans. It's a little bit of a scope creep for us, but I guess we were successful in other stuff. So no good deed goes undone. Since the housing plan's implementation, just to highlight of a few of the metrics that we've been working on and that we're going to be working on. So we've implemented our Affordable Housing Development Program. We have about $10 million going towards the development and preservation of affordable housing. We've drastically increased our resources to address veterans homelessness. We've worked with municipal partners and continue to work with municipal partners around identifying land use strategies and helping to work through various different affordable housing strategies. We built that women's shelter or funded a partner to build the women's shelter. And we've also implemented various- we've also implemented various different programs. Wake Prevent is our prevention program that looks to prevent people from experiencing homelessness to begin with. So if somebody's at risk, maybe they can't make a payment, we look to qualify them and make that payment for them, and then wrap services around them so we can help to figure out how they make the next month's payment. We also got COVID thrown in there. And as we know, COVID-19 drastically impacted a lot of folks' economic situation. And so with that, we had to stand up many programs related. We stood up hotels for individuals who were experiencing homelessness to make sure that they were able to get off the streets, they were able to isolate and quarantine safely. And from that process of standing that up, we wrapped services around them, and then we're able to house about 300 people in six months to get people off the streets and into housing. So we've taken experiences like that, and we've built off them. Now, we have a program called Bridge to Home. And with that program, we are resourcing our homeless services partners to be able to provide those wraparound services so that they can see the similar outcomes that we saw when we provided those in the hotel. I will also say, just to mention a few other things, we're working on several of our permanent supportive housing programs, and we'll get into that in a little bit here. We also launched an affordable mortgage program under Mark's division, where we are helping to prevent foreclosures, as well as helping first-time homebuyers with a second mortgage that is deferred and is completely forgiven after 20 years if they stay in their property. And we're continuing to add to our programs such as those. Overall, the county's investment continues to grow in affordable housing. As you can see here, the green is the federal funding, so a lot of that funding came in in 2021 as it related to COVID-19. But Wake County has also been very intentional in its support for affordable housing and continuing to help us grow our budget. So now I'm going to get into a little bit about our divisions, and I'll try to go through these a little bit quickly. But our Research Data and Systems Division is led by Vanessa Kopp. And so again, this division is focused around data collection and monitoring across the department. It's also focused on creating data analytics that really inform how we create our programs and how our programs are doing so that we're making sure, both from a data standpoint, but also from a community engagement and a direct resident feedback, that our programs are providing what's needed across the community. Also helps us to communicate data, so the dashboard that I mentioned earlier, that's on the housing webpage, is a way that we'd like to communicate data and support folks across the community as they have inquiries. And then they also are performing focused research on what are the best practices across the country, and how could we adapt those here in Wake County to have the biggest impact. They are also launching two initiatives, one being the Landlord Engagement Unit, and the other one, the Bridge to Home Program, which I mentioned earlier. But the Landlord Engagement Unit is a really neat program that's kind of like a matchmaker. So we're asking and we're connecting with property owners, landlords, property management companies, and we're connecting them with folks who are in need of housing. And so we're working with service providers who may have a person who has these barriers. Maybe they have a bad credit history, or maybe they have an eviction on your record. And so we're matching them to a landlord who says, hmm, that doesn't really matter to me. And then we're offering incentives to those landlords, financial incentives, for them to take those residence.
What are some of those incentives you're offering?
Signing bonuses. We're offering up to three months' worth of rent should something not go great. We're offering renewal bonuses if you renew a contract. We will sweeten the pot more if you're willing to take a tenant-based rental assistance voucher. And so we're happy to, anybody you know, send them our way.
And what about the tenant themselves? Are there any programs for them for, just where I'm looking for financial literacy?
Yes. So most, well, all of the time, the tenant is working with an existing agency in the community. So they may be receiving both case management support, which would be connection to all of those resources they may need, whether it's employment counseling, financial literacy, or budgeting classes, as well as also potentially receiving financial assistance. So their financial assistance may be a permanent financial assistance, or it may be a temporary financial assistance. So maybe it's help with a few months' rent and a down payment, maybe it's two years' worth of help, maybe it's permanent help because they're disabled, and otherwise, they wouldn't have enough income to be able to compete in the market. So the agencies are kind of bringing some of the programming and the clients to the table. The landlords, we're trying to make their lives a little bit easier and helping to make that match, and then also helping to provide the financial incentives there.
Okay, thank you.
So our Homeless and Prevention Services Division is run by David Harris. He has been with the department for quite some time, so he really is an expert in the community around homelessness. This is a listing of all the various different programs operated within this division, but they kind of break down into, he runs a very large community agency funding program, which offers financial funding to the agencies for various different homeless services, whether it's rapid rehousing, case management, street outreach. He also, under his division, is the South Wilmington Street Center, which is the largest men's shelter in the state of North Carolina. We have significantly resourced that facility to make sure that we're, those individuals who may enter that facility are there for a short amount of time as possible, and that when they exit, they have all the tools and resources available to them to be housed permanently and stably for the rest of the time. We also, while folks are in the South Wilmington Street Center or otherwise, connect them to employment initiatives. We may connect folks to truck driving school so they can get their CDL. We have had really great experiences and stories of some folks who, we'll hook them up with the truck driving school, and they'll leave making $70,000, $80,000 a year. And they're, you know, they're able to sleep in their vehicle if they want to, but it really turns out well for them. We also work with Wake Tech and other agencies to help get that employment training. And then the other big program under this division is our Wake Prevent Program. So again, the prevention program that I mentioned earlier.
I have a question for you on the women's shelter.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you house women, I'm assuming that's from maybe domestic violence or homelessness, both?
Correct. There are two different shelters in our community. Well, there's three different shelters in our community for women. There's shelters Salvation Army for women who have children. Urban Ministries runs the shelter for women who do not have children or are unaccompanied. And then Interact runs the shelter for folks who may be experiencing domestic violence, and we help to resource all of them.
But what if they have children that are 16 or older?
So we are currently working through that with some of our various different agencies. One of the things that we've realized in kind of our data gathering and through the COVID-19 pandemic is that we do not have enough family shelter, and we do not have enough non-congregate family shelter. And so one of the things that the federal government has really pushed and has realized through the pandemic is that non-congregate shelter is the way to go. And so basically, what non-congregate means is that a family gets a room. It's not an open dorm where everyone has a bed, and, you know, you're, somebody you don't even know might be sharing the bunk bed above you. It's, everyone gets a room and a setting, and that way you can group families in those rooms. And so families can have suites, families could have adjoining rooms, you know, and a family, and I think the other important piece is that when Wake County talks about family, we're not talking about women with children under 16. We're talking about spouses. We're talking about father and kids. We're talking about women and kids that are over 16. You know, we're talking about whatever family unit is showing up and representing. And so when we look at what our data is, we have, I think it's about a third of the amount of beds that we need for family shelters. So that is an area that we really want to focus on in the coming year.
That's good to hear. Thank you.
And we actually received some federal funding through the pandemic-related dollars that we have written a plan for that is focused on providing more non-congregate shelters. So we have about $3.5 million in resources there. We also want to pool our resources with the City of Raleigh, who got about five, a little over $5 million there, to see what we can do about that family shelter issue. And then finally, here, under this division is the Oak City Cares Partnership. And so this is a really great building that I was able to be a part of the renovation and the programming and design of. It's ultimately, I think of it as kind of air traffic control for anyone who is experiencing some sort of housing crisis. There is a multitude of services that are actually offered in this space. And so you can show up for one thing, and maybe you're just end up talking to somebody else, and they help you out with something else completely different that you may need to get you back to where you are stable in your housing. If you see the blue part, that's right kind of on the end of the picture in this building, this is actually something that was just refinished by the Housing Department. And so a lot of our staff that have previously been stationed kind of at the Swinburne Human Services Campus will be moving into this campus. So now we will have kind of a complete housing campus here to be able to provide services and meet people where they are, rather than having them drive all around the county to get different services.
Where is this located? Did you say where it was located?
It's on South Wilmington Street, 1400 South Wilmington, or 1430, I guess, on South Wilmington Street, just south of downtown Raleigh. And so it's on a bus line that was very important for us when we selected a building. Also, this building is an old warehouse that was renovated. Otherwise, it would have had to have been torn down. And so it was also a way for us to fix up a blighted property to be able to provide those services. It's located right next to our South Wilmington Street Center as well. And so for men that may be staying at that, they have access to the services that are also offered next door.
Good facility.
Our Permanent Housing and Supportive Services Division is led by Diane Salento. And this division is really focused on those who have higher barriers, more challenges, or are more vulnerable. So permanent supportive housing is combining financial resources to help someone access housing and stably live in their housing. But this also combines that with case management to make sure that, really, for individuals but other than this case management, they would probably not be able to live integrated into our community. So this is really supporting folks who, a lot of folks who have behavioral health diagnoses, may have physical disabilities, may have other challenges or trauma that they're dealing with. So this division has really kind of grown, both in us providing additional financial assistance for those, for this particular population, or identifying different housing resources for this population. But the biggest, I think, payback and kind of return on investment here is that we see when individuals generally that you would consider kind of in this population are not appropriately treated, it costs the community and the county a significant amount of money. So we did a study with SAS, and we looked at what we called kind of the familiar faces. And these are people who are showing up constantly in our jails, calling EMS, showing up in hospitals, showing up in the homeless system. And we tried to identify and combine all that data. Now, it was hard for us to, and we couldn't actually do it, pull in data from the hospitals, obviously because healthcare privacy. But we all kind of sat around in a room as we were talking about this and thinking about this with our hospital partners, and we said, if we threw out 10 names, I bet you everyone in this room would know those 10 names. Because these are the people that are really suffering in our community. And whatever we're providing as interventions, it may not necessarily be helping them. And so this division in our department is really focused on what resources can we provide to stop the cycle of trauma and the suffering that is being experienced by this community. And so, you know, this study was really eye-opening in looking at, just for example, what one individual that would be considered a high utilizer would cost the community versus the cost of housing. You could house them like four times over compared to what they were currently costing the community just by cycling through all of these various different systems. So in addition, just to kind of point out some of those particular programs here, Wake County offers over 300 vouchers of different sources. We focus on veterans, we focus on individuals who have HIV or AIDS, youth that are aging out of the foster care system, folks with behavioral health diagnosis. And so we provide financial support, but we also provide a number of different teams that help to support those folks with case management and other supportive services. We're currently working on renovating our Cornerstone Service Center to focus specifically on this population. So whereas we have the Oak City Center, which focuses more on the broader population of people who may be experiencing housing instability or homelessness, this is going to be more focused on these folks that maybe don't feel comfortable or don't do well in that kind of setting. And so this is going to be a little bit more niche focus for those folks. We're going to provide peer supports there, various different programs, and we will also have 20 units of transitional housing in that building.
Is this coupled with mental health?
It is, yes. We work very closely with our behavioral health partners to make sure, and oftentimes, that's kind of the missing piece, is they have the services, but they don't have the financial resources, or we have the financial resources, but they have the services. And so we work a lot on integrating those to make sure that the person, the whole person is supported. And again, something neat that we implemented in our Affordable Housing Development Program, which is where we fund properties, we said that every property we fund, we want you to set aside 10% of those units for our folks that have vouchers. And so we oftentimes, what you'll hear with vouchers is that nobody takes vouchers. We don't have access to units. So this helped us get around that access issue. So if we're going to put county money into something, we want to make sure that you're accepting all of our residents, just not just the residents that you want to accept. And so since we started making that change in 2018, you can see the number of units we've been able to put into, either put on the ground or in the process of being put on the ground, and this hasn't even been updated for what we funded this year. So there's even more coming.
Where does that 10% number come from?
So, long story short, there is an Olmsted ruling with the federal government about making sure not to concentrate individuals who may have a behavioral health diagnosis. And so the state of North Carolina already requires 10% of the units be set aside for their key program, which serves a similar population. And the state has deemed that really, they don't want to see more than 20% of a development be focused on that particular population. And so since they set aside 10%, we said, we'll set aside another 10%. In that way, we won't go over the 20% that you consider best practice, but it allows us to kind of match your programming.
So the combined total was 20% that could be in a development?
Correct.
Gotcha.
And that's in all these developments?
That's in all these developments, yes.
I noticed the seniors, you know, I'm guessing a lot among social security and all, but even that doesn't provide enough income to...
Absolutely.
Does the grant that is located across the street from the Granite Falls apartment, a date fall on this program?
So they were, they are in Affordable Housing Development. However, Wake County did not fund them, so they did not ask us or request funding from us. And so actually, originally, when Granite Falls was built, this request wasn't in existence. However, they came back to us to ask for a refinance, and at that point in time, anybody that's coming back to us, we're going to go ahead and get that extra set aside in there. And so that's how we got Granite Falls to be added to this list.
What about the grant?
Oh, the grant.
Yes.
You mean the apartments?
Mm-hmm. Because those four seniors that are assisted to and older, and they are based off of 30% and 6% of the IMA.
So that's not one that's part of our portfolio? So we didn't fund it? If they wanted to come just for additional funding or any kind of assistance, we would work with them to incorporate this set aside into it.
Which sounds like they're already doing it.
They did private funding.
Yeah.
Private funding.
And a lot of times, folks will come to us when they have kind of a gap in their financing, and they need that extra money to make the deal work. Maybe the land's more expensive, or obviously, like now, costs have escalated drastically. But folks can apply directly to the state and just participate in the state program without any, without coming to us for any funding. And so at that point, we can't really force them to provide any of these services. But once we put a dollar in there, we can ask them to do things.
And that's why you have a lot of developers staying away from that, because they don't want to be, their hands forced to do that.
Correct, correct. But I think we try very much to sweeten the pot for them, so by no means are they losing out on any particular income. You know, their profit margin is not impacted, they're not having to pull any money out of their pocket. And so I think, you know, again, it goes back to, affordable housing is important, and I think you have to push for it at various kind of different levels because the population is different. Because the population is different. You know, not everybody is making enough to be able to afford these units. So at some point, we're going to have a saturation of units that there's not enough people that can afford them.
If I can add, Alicia, in the years since we've implemented this 10% mandatory set aside, we've had our highest production numbers ever for our program. And so far, we haven't had any developers complain about this set aside. Again, because the program is structured so that they're going to be compensated for any losses that they might experience due to having to keep the unit on the market while waiting for a potential client, or I think we have damage payments as well. So we really make it easily, we try to make it as appealing as possible for our development partners.
So the developments or the development partners that are considering new developments, are they inclusively coming to you guys now? Or is it, what percentage, I guess, what percentage of the developers actually get you involved?
So I would say, so there, a lot of these developers are specific affordable housing developers. So they're going after low-income housing tax credits through the state. And their developments that they're building are going to be income restricted. And I would say probably 85% of the...
Eighty, eighty-five?
Eighty to eighty-five percent of folks that are doing that type of development in Wake County are engaging with us. If they're doing it inside the city of Raleigh, they may be engaging with the city of Raleigh and us, or just the city. Same with Towne of Cary, same with some of the other, Towne of Apex, who have implemented their own kind of smaller versions of these programs. If it is a, if it is just a regular market rate developer, they may not be engaging with us necessarily. Again, because they may not want these type of restrictions on their property. And so that's where, as the municipalities control the land use within your jurisdiction, if that is important to you, there are certain levers you can put into place to ask them to do various things to address affordability. And so those are some of the tools that we've put kind of into the Affordable Housing Plan or that we've helped other municipalities think through. Because we want to make sure that ultimately housing is created just in general. But a portion of that should be reflective of the portion that we're seeing in our community of people with various different incomes.
How long, how do you determine the rent if you're not market rate though?
Correct. So typically, the rent is determined by the income level for that particular unit. And so you would say this person falls in this kind of income range of what the median income in Wake County is. And then the rent would be affordable to that income range. And so when a person would move into that apartment or to that home, they would provide kind of their job information, you know, their income information, just like you would if you are applying for any other kind of rental property or ownership property. And they would be evaluated based off of that to make sure that they're within those income ranges. And then that rent would be affordable for them.
How long do you stick with the tenant?
So typically, the tenants have 12-month leases in the rental side. And they can renew those leases as long as they continue to meet those requirements. They may have various different, a lot of times in these developments, the rental developments specifically, there will be units for various different income ranges. So there may be units for folks that are earning less than 30% of the median income or 60% of the median income. As long as there's unit availability there, they can oftentimes stay in that even if their income changes. If not, if their income continues to increase, the property itself would work with them to help identify a more appropriate solution so that they're not continuing to kind of take up the space of somebody that may need that affordable housing.
So that's where your problem can come into existence. Because how are they taken care of? By giving them an eviction notice?
No, the property, the property would work with them to say, hey, at recertification, you have kind of a period of where you can, you can come into compliance. And so every year, folks would be kind of recertified that they're continuing to meet the income requirements. And they would know that. And then they would be worked with to make sure that they're able to kind of relocate. We don't, we really, everyone in kind of the Affordable Housing Practice, last worst-case scenario is having to displace anyone or put anyone in any sort of housing instability situation.
Federal guidelines actually allow somebody, so if somebody is income qualified at move-ins, when they first move into the building, even if they, if their income grows at recertification, they're allowed to stay in that unit. As long as the next available unit is rented to somebody who is income qualified, that person can stay. So displacement is never on the agenda for these people. We want their incomes to grow.
Yeah. And a lot of times, the property will, the property management themselves will work to help them. Because a lot of times, folks will want to move out and they'll want to move to a place maybe has more amenities or something else. And they'll work with them to try to help locate that. But again, as Mark said, you know, displacement is not at all what we want to do.
You talk about amenities, some of these places are doing amenities, I understand.
Absolutely, yes. A lot of the properties that we're working to develop have some of the same or similar amenities as regular market rate developments. So they have community spaces, they have workout spaces, they have dog runs, they have, you know, walking trails, various different amenities. And it actually is, amenities are a requirement with the housing program at the state level, the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program. So oftentimes, developers get kind of points for the amenities that they're going to be providing in their buildings.
I just see a revolving door on those who can afford it today versus those who cannot afford it when their income goes up. And with the, with the, what is it, the hourly rate going up, those who you may have had in your program, maybe they made $9 or $10 an hour, now they're making $15 or $16 an hour. So what happens to them? So I understand what you're saying, that you're trying to work with them, but not all landlords are going to do that. Because some of the landlords that were working with people on that fixed income are now trying to put them out to bring somebody else in. So some of them are not on the program you mentioned because they want to be able to dictate their monthly rates. But for those who are, it just seems like those people are destined to be in the streets or in a shelter.
Yeah. And those, I mean, I would say we probably see the reverse of that situation a lot more than we see the, kind of what you're talking about, where people are losing income and the landlord's not willing to work with people who have less resources.
No, not losing income, their income is growing.
Yeah. And that's where, you know, we would certainly encourage folks to call legal aid and to work with them on understanding, you know, that could be a fair housing violation. And so that's certainly something we would encourage those folks to, you know, work with the attorneys on. Because that should not, that should not be the case. It actually should be a good thing for the landlord to have someone whose, whose income is increasing.
Well, I'm glad you're seeing the opposite of what I'm seeing, because you see a lot more than I do, I'm sure. So that's comforting to hear.
Yes, ma'am. And so I'll quickly go through our Veteran Services Division. I do want to spend some time talking about our Equitable Housing Division, but how are we, how are we doing on time here? Wrapping it up, okay. So Veteran Services, Wake County's been doing that since 1981. And we serve all eligible veterans, National Guard, active-duty service members, as well as their family and their children. We try to get them connected to all the benefits and resources that they're available, both at all levels, federal, state, and county. Again, we are reorganizing as a county this year with Veteran Services coming over to the Housing Department. We already had veterans programs specifically focusing on veterans who were experiencing homelessness. And so we're kind of combining the county's existing veterans programs with those programs, really with a focus to end veterans homelessness by the end of this year. And so again, you know, we saw a significant amount of veterans experiencing homelessness back in 2012 when the community enjoyed, or joined up with the Mayor's Challenge to End Veteran Homelessness. Since then, we have gotten that number all the way down to around 26 veterans currently in our community that are experiencing homelessness. And when we say ending homelessness, we're not talking about no one ever experiences homelessness at all. It's more so that our community is appropriately resourced so that if somebody does experience homelessness or is at risk of experiencing homelessness, that they are appropriately addressed immediately in that episode. Our experience is as brief as possible so that we can appropriately get them to the right resources.
This whole landing, I think it's 20 units. To me, that one looks very interesting. So it's all veterans that live there? And it was a community created just for veterans?
Yes, sir. It was actually one that we had the honor of participating in with CASA, who's a local nonprofit agency that builds affordable housing. They started off with a 10-unit phase of that property and then added another 10 units, which we helped them to support. But that property is exclusively for veterans and offers not only affordable housing for the veterans on the property, but also kind of connection to services and various other needs that the veterans may have. But what we find with veterans is that they really, creating a cohort is extremely important, them having that peer support and that camaraderie of folks who understand what their experience is like. And so even in our South Wilmington Street Center, we took one of our five dorms and we devoted one dorm exclusively to veterans. And we've incorporated peer programming and case management that is specific to veteran case management and intensive services. And we've seen really great outcomes with that, again, by creating that camaraderie and that, you know, that specific focus on the veteran population.
So if you was interested, or say we, the town was interested in doing something like that, would we have to prove a need for it from a veteran's, you know, need here in town or...
No, not necessarily. Actually, and you know, as we've dug in to get into the Veterans Division over in-house, Wake County has the highest number of veterans in the state and, which is really interesting. I can see why anybody would want to move here. But veterans, certainly with our proximity to all the bases, really seem to end up here. And so it's really just about putting a specific kind of target population. You will see some developments will focus on multiple target populations. So maybe it's a, you know, it's a 50-unit development and they'll say, we want 25 units to be exclusively for veterans. And we want 25 units to be open to anyone. Or you'll see places that will focus it more specifically on that population. But it's really just about the developer and what they, kind of how they want to build their development. But you don't have to, you wouldn't have to specifically prove anything as a town. So here, our Equitable Housing Program, our division is led by Mark Perlman. It is small but mighty from a staff standpoint. We do a lot of work in partnership with the community. And we have a lot of programs that are being offered out of, out of this. And so just to highlight a few, one of those things, again, kind of utilizing those non-financial resources. We looked at the land that Wake County, Wake County Schools, Wake Tech owns. And we said, do we have any land that would be great for development of affordable housing? And we've started working through that process. We have a piece, we have a 20-acre property in the Towne of Holly Springs. It's going to be partially developed for 125 or 124 affordable housing units. And then the other half is getting developed as commercial property for offices and retail space. So those folks, and it's directly across from Ting Park, the baseball park. We have a property that Wake Tech actually gave to us that is on South Wilmington Street as well, right near their Public Safety Campus. And that property is going to have affordable housing on it with a certain amount of the property and the units being for Wake Tech students who may be low-income. Making sure that we have, we have units for our folks that are trying to go to school and better their lives. So we're doing a lot of different interesting things there, but Wake County doesn't own that great a property. So at some point, we will come to the end of our list and we're encouraging our partners to look at what they have. So another interesting project that we've helped with is the Towne of Cary has combined a piece of property that they own with a school property next door, a piece of the property that the school system owned that wasn't really available for use because it was kind of being divided by a very large ditch. And they're going to build affordable housing on that site. And so we didn't own any of the property, but we worked with the town and the school system to be able to create that.
What do you all do in the way of, I know the stadium is coming to downtown Raleigh and a lot of people have been displaced. I know a lot of people that own property down there and are being displaced very easily. Do you all help with kind of educating folks about, I would like to run through there and say, hold on to your property. But people aren't always able to do that. Do you help with some of that education around that?
So that is actually something we want to get more into this year. One of the things we asked for in the budget was a community engagement coordinator to get out there in the community and to provide more of that support. The really interesting piece about the Wake Tech property I was just talking about is it's directly below downtown south. So that is actually going to provide more affordable housing in that area that is likely going to see a significant change in economics. And we're working on even, we're working to try to identify even more properties in that area. Because it's going to be a major center for economic development, for jobs, for amenities. And so just as the people who can buy the fancy penthouses in that area, we want other people to have access to that just as well. But yes, that's extremely, education and really that community engagement is extremely important. Because it's not just about creating new, it's about preserving existing. We want families to understand the value of their asset, what they have to pass down to their children, what their children have to pass down to their children. And make sure, again, that all of that displacement, whether it's kind of cultural displacement or indirect displacement, is not necessarily happening. So I guess real quickly, we've built a lot of units or we've preserved a lot of units in the past year. We had that 2,500-unit metric that we wanted to reach in five years. We did that in three years and we're continuing to do more. So we want to kind of blow that metric out the water. So that's where we kind of are right now. We have more developments that we're expecting to come forward this year. And we also try to make sure that they are geographically dispersed across the county. We don't have a whole lot of control over where developers can identify land at. But we do have, and we do score based off of areas in what we call kind of communities of opportunity. So making sure that folks are developing in areas where there's resources and amenities. People, you know, aren't just out in the middle of nowhere and don't have access to anything. And again, we do a lot of our work in leverage. And so for every dollar that Wake County spends on affordable housing, we're bringing in nine other dollars to the community. We are a huge economic development part of the community. We are, we are bringing in multiple millions of dollars, hundreds of millions of dollars each year in development that is being spent in providing jobs in Wake County, building affordable housing. So again, getting back to that community benefit of affordable housing. And we really try to focus on those with the greatest needs. So one in four of our homes that we're developing are really focusing on those lower-income folks that are really struggling and really cost burdened here in Wake County. And to kind of get to the point of the comment around preservation too, one of the biggest things that we're working on right now is called the Preservation Fund. And so the double-edged sword of affordable housing is that you can't build your way out of it. And you have to preserve affordability as well. And so while we've drastically increased our development, we also need to stop the bleeding that we're seeing that's happening in our market. And so the Preservation Fund is going to be a $62 million fund that Wake County has put $10.5 million into and leveraged the other $50 million from private banks, philanthropic partners, the city of Raleigh and other folks to be able to acquire properties that are at risk of displacement for people or becoming unaffordable. That may be properties that are aging out of the, of previous affordability programs. So maybe they were in the tax credit program, they're aging out of it. Or it may just be properties that by, by their state are more affordable. Not only are you just going to buy that property and keep it affordable, we're going to buy that property, we're going to renovate it so it looks better. It's better for the people living there and keep it affordable so that they don't get displaced when that happens. This is just some more information about our products that we're going to be offering that fund. It's going to be in partnership with Self-Health Ventures Fund. So again, bringing in local partners to help us with that. And it's a $62 million fund. Specific to Roseville, again, right now in Wake County, we continue to look at this number each year. We have about 56,000 units of affordable housing that's needed based off of the populations that are experiencing cost burden. It's a huge number. And so we're working on all of these different things we've talked about today to try to address that. When you look at Roseville specifically, the number looks much lower. So it's about 150-unit deficit. However, I think given Roseville's size and growth, that, you know, that does speak a lot. I also think too, one of the things I was mentioning to Meredith earlier is that, for whatever reason, I haven't had a chance to really dig into this very much. But Roseville has been, has had a pretty high median income for quite some time. And so I would also think that many folks that may be lower-income may not be here already. And so that's why you're not seeing the levels of cost burden that you may see in other areas. The other thing to point out here too, in your gross rent is less than Wake County's average rent. But again, I would say that this may be looking more at a fair market number and not a realistic number, as well as your vacancy rate here. But I do also know that, you know, Roseville has typically had higher levels of ownership than... than it has had rental. And so that number may be impacted by that. But the growth that, the growth and the erosion of affordability that is seen in different parts of Wake County is certainly spreading outside of Wake County's boundaries and is spreading to the east of Wake County as well. And so when we're having conversations with our partners in the West, the conversations may look a little bit differently than the conversations we're having with our partners in the East. And what the conversations we really want to focus on with our partners in the East is as you grow, it is extremely important to grow affordably and equitably. And so, you know, where you can, it's important to try to get those, get that affordability carved out. Have enough units for the folks that can pay market rate, but also create some units for the folks that can't. And that helps with the displacement, that helps with continuing to have a workforce that can, you know, work and live in the same community. And, you know, ultimately, as our, as we continue to grow, you know, if somebody has a choice of, I want to work at the grocery, I'm going to have to work at a grocery store or I want to work at a grocery store, but I live in Franklinton, I would work at the grocery store in Franklinton if that meant I didn't have to drive all the way, you know, into Wake County somewhere. And so it's important for us to have a workforce, so we need to have a place for that workforce to live.
I'm sorry, you said 150 in Roseville?
Yes.
What was the 150?
Deficit.
Unit deficit. So that would essentially equate to, you have about 150 households in your community that are cost burdened. And so that data looks a little bit different here, but essentially these two charts show renter cost burden and homeownership cost burden. And what you can kind of see is that in Roseville, compared to Wake County, you actually have a little bit less population or households that are cost burdened. And you have far less households who are severely cost burdened. And that kind of is what led me to the, to saying that it may be that there are not people that, there may be a limited or smaller subset of folks here who are lower income. Or if they are lower income, they may have been here for quite some time, so they're not necessarily experiencing, like when they bought their property here, it was affordable to them and they're able to maintain it probably because it's paid off. And so they're not necessarily showing up as being cost burdened, but that, you know, that could change very quickly.
Or are you basing that on something from the local schools? And I say that because a lot of the students that go to the schools here in Roseville are not from Roseville, they're from the outskirts. So does that number play into that?
It certainly can play into that. And so I think it's, again, and I think this is an important conversation to have too when you're thinking about schools, the ability for parents to be involved in their kids' lives when they're having to travel so far to get to the school that their kids go to. So that's something we've talked about with other communities. As the county tries to, you know, the school system has their assignment plans, you know, we want to make sure that our, you know, to me, it is important that kids have a diverse school that they get to go to. And, and, you know, Wake County tries to accomplish that with the assignments that they do. But it also has a negative impact of if folks, if kids are going to school way far away from where they actually live, then that's more difficult, it's more time that they have to spend on buses, but it's also more difficult for their family to be able to participate in their education.
Wake County, they don't participate on hands on getting any of these things built. In other words, I don't see them in the county, always in the municipalities, right? They're not in the county, the county doesn't sponsor one or doesn't build. And I say that to say this, you know, we live in a very rural part of the county and we've got a lot of Wake County that surrounds us and a lot of the people that are not living in town lives out there. It's a little bit cheaper to live out there, but in the last three, four years, everything Wake County approves to go outside of town is four, $500,000 houses, just as big as the ones going in town, but they're going in the county. And to me, I don't see where that county is really helping the situation in at all.
Yeah, that's a great point. So Wake County, with the One Wake Comprehensive Plan, really tried to change the way that we grow. And the Housing Department had staff that helped to sit and advocate on that planning process. But really what we want to see is more growth get directed to the municipalities because that is where the amenities and the public infrastructure is. And so oftentimes you don't see like apartment complexes or anything like that, anything with heavy density being built in the county because everything is on well-inseptic and it can't be supported. And so that's why a lot of the time you see more density in the municipalities because that's where the water and sewer is located. Now, Wake County does, and I meant to get to this, but Wake County is the HUD, US Department of Housing and Urban Development, grantee on behalf of all of the municipalities outside the city of Raleigh. We are partially for the town of Cary. So we receive federal funding, it's about five, less than $5 million a year, from the federal government to carry out affordable housing strategies, all of the various different strategies I talked about throughout the county. Some of them we can also carry out in partnership with the town of Cary and in partnership with the city of Raleigh, others we can't carry out in those jurisdictions. So for example, Wake County has a rehabilitation program to offer fixes, emergency repairs or mobility repairs for any individual in Wake County outside of the city of Raleigh or the town of Cary. So we, Roseville residents are qualified for that program. We have done a number of those actually in the town of Roseville. And we have other funding. So when we provide the financing for developments like Granite Falls, we are providing funding for the town to be able to have affordable housing. And so I think this is the biggest thing for me to stress today is that as y'all dig more into housing affordability and what that looks like in your community, understand that Wake County stands ready to be a willing and helpful partner in that. We have resources, we have resources that the commissioners have put, have given to us over and above the federal government to make sure that housing is affordable throughout the county. And so we are open to crafting whatever that vision looks like with each of the municipalities. Again, like I said, as you grow, we want to make sure you grow equitably and to make sure that there's still affordability. And so it's important to just, you know, for us to have conversations, for staff to have conversations, for them to bring those conversations back to you on all the various programs that Wake County has to offer to your residents as it stands right now, and then any way that we can partner in the future to make sure that you're able to preserve some of the affordability in your community.
What resources did you use to come up with the 150-unit deficit along with the rent prices and the mortgage?
Sure. So we use a lot of federal data that is various different data sets from the census. And so the, a lot of the cost burden data comes from the ACS or the American Community Survey. There's also a data set that's called CHAS, C-H-A-S, which is HUD data combined with the American Community Survey data. And so a lot of times that's what we're pulling to look at this because it looks at households that are cost burdened. And it looks, it breaks it down specifically between renters and owners and at various different income levels. Also looks at how many homeowners or households report that their housing has condition issues. So may have, you know, need a new roof or have some sort of repairs needed. And so we look at that data across the county and can pull that to kind of see by jurisdiction. And this is, these, this slide right here is a handout we share with all of the jurisdictions each year, along with this slide. So we update this annually and we provide it back out to all of the towns, just so that across all of the towns, because everyone is working on various different things, like what Apex might want to implement as affordable housing may look completely different than what Wake Forest wants to implement as affordable housing. And we've helped to participate in many of those municipalities' plans for affordable housing to help them kind of craft that and how Wake County can fit into that. But this is one kind of metric that is standardized for all of the municipalities that we can, that we can kind of look at and give them information for them to base their decisions off of.
Those numbers are so low though.
They are. And so the one bad thing about the ACS data and the census data is it often lags. And so, you know, this number I think was based off of the 2014 to 2019 data. So typically census data is a few years behind.
And okay, so when you say that, that makes sense. But too bad you didn't have like a number to add to that to try to make up the difference for the lag. It would just be an estimate, but it would be more realistic than what we're seeing, although we understand, well, I understand why.
Yeah. And we are working with Tax Administration and, which is the Tax Office, as well as some other data sets to try to identify and create tools that help us to identify a little bit more real-time and real-time but reliable, that's important for us, data. And so, you know, it's really hard with a place that's growing like Wake County is to keep up with that when this data is, you know, a few years out of date. But we're open to any ideas.
Yeah, one thing could be helpful, just create some like benchmark data, like if you grow, so as you grow, you need to grow 5% of this type or 15% of this type, you know? That would help us a lot, Planning Department, to understand, you know, if we put on 1,000 new units that, you know, 150 of them need to be, you know, following these programs. So I don't know if there's a benchmark number you guys can give to Planning Department or not. I could see where that would be the easier way to do it, you know?
And there are some data sets out there that you have to pay to get access to, but we'll provide more real-time market data. And so we're looking into, you know, is that something that Wake County could acquire on behalf of everyone so that we could really? And our research data in Systems Division is kind of brand new, it's not even a year old. And so it was, it started out as just one person that we asked for when we did the Affordable Housing Plan and we realized we were going to have to be our own department. And then it, and now it's grown into several people. But we, and that's something that we kind of want to help and take on for the municipalities, you know, understanding that y'all may not have the staffing and the capacity to really dig into all of these programs or to find the data. Let us do that for you because we're, you know, it's an economy of scale. We're doing it for all, you know, all the other municipalities, you know, in coordination with them or for them across the community. So that's what we really want to be here, is a resource to bear some of that burden, but also to kind of, you know, spread some of that, again, economy of scale, sharing some of the costs of what it takes to really have up-to-date information and a lot of diverse programming.
Well, this, this has been really helpful, but I'm always curious as to how would the community know? This is great that we're getting this information and it's broadcast on YouTube, but I'm saying if I was just a citizen trying to figure out how to help someone else or if I need to help myself, I wouldn't even know where to start.
Absolutely. And so one of the things, again, with the community engagement person, we really wanted to get out more in the community and provide that information from kind of a grassroots effort. Get connected to not just the organization that someone may experience when they're experiencing homelessness or may access when they're experiencing homelessness, but like, you know, people's churches, people's other kind of groups that they're a part of so that they can either offer resources to help or identify ways to help, or they can understand what help is out there for them. We're working on kind of the tools, the handouts, the brochures, attending community functions to try to get more out there, to have more online. We're promoting right now really our Access Hub, one of the things we funded at the Oak City Center and through our community, is a one-stop number for anyone who's at risk or experiencing homelessness to be able to call them. And so we can certainly get that information over to all of you so that if anyone, if a constituent says, hey, I have a housing issue, you can point them to that, to that specific number and there's somebody there to help direct them to the most appropriate resource and get them enrolled and kind of figuring out what that resource is. You know, we try to make sure that our information is shared with 201, Wake Network of Care, you know, put onto our website, although I will say our website is still a kind of a work in progress, so we need to improve that there. But again, it's doing things like this, getting, getting information to you because I'm sure you get contacted quite frequently by constituents, getting information to our commissioners, getting information to town staff, and then again, trying to get out there in those community networks.
I think my question was similar to Sheila's except I wanted to ask you, oh my God, I wrote notes and I can't even read it. And I do apologize for my shades, I have my eyes dilated and I'm very challenged tonight, but adding on to what Sheila said, I wanted to also ask, so you're dealing with a particular population, right? So, but there's clearly a lot more to affordable housing, a lot more people we need. So how do you, what is, is there a plan for those who either don't know where to go or who just don't want it? And I say that because for example, like say if you go to California, you can, anybody can see with undilated eyes the homelessness that's taking place in California.
Absolutely.
I mean, you see blankets, beds, little bicycles, everything, people just on the streets. You don't really see that as much here. Again, some people may not want it, some people may not know where to go. When you mentioned the website, some people don't have access to that.
Yep.
So that's a whole different niche right there. So how, how is that?
Yeah, that's a great question.
And I don't expect you to have the whole answer, I was just, that's just a thought, like how does?
So we really kind of see our space as where the market's not going to naturally create a solution by itself. So the market is going to, the market is going to do what it's going to do. And there's things that we can kind of do to control or direct the market, but ultimately the market's not going to create housing. At this point, that's less than $500 a month or less than $750 a month. So that's where we try to step in. The market is also, and general services are not necessarily going to serve specific populations. And so we want to make sure that we have, that we fill as many gaps as we possibly can for what the market's not doing and for the people who are not necessarily getting served in our community. And so one of the things that we really do need to work on and have put kind of another focus on for this year is looking at our street outreach. And so street outreach is where we have teams of folks who are going out, who are engaging with those folks who may be unsheltered, who may be in the community. And I think for Wake County, we are such a large from area mass standpoint, community that homelessness isn't very visible. It's getting more and more visible, I think, even in the last, you know, couple of years with the pandemic. But it's not, you know, there's a lot of woods still and there's a lot of people that live in the woods and you don't ever see them. And if you didn't know where to look for them, you'd probably never know that they were there. And so getting those resources out there to proactively engage those folks to become a trusted resource so that you can try to encourage them to, to find a solution that is more appropriate for them. Each year we do a service for folks who have died on the streets and it's heartbreaking to, it's on the winter solstice, which is the longest night of the year, to hear about the folks in our community who lose their life or don't, you know, or their life ends and they don't actually have a place to go. And so that shouldn't be, that shouldn't be an option for anyone. And so, you know, whatever we need to do to make sure that somebody at least has a setting that is, that is comfortable for them, they don't necessarily, if they're more comfortable in the woods, camp in your backyard. Like, you know, that may be the best option for you, but at least you have a place to go inside if it's raining or if it's freezing or if there's a tornado. You know, we just want folks to have, to have that because shelter is a basic human right and need.
I think, I will piggyback on that. I think that maybe we need to be more proactive with putting information on our website to help out, you know, to get the message out as well. But also on the flip side, you always have people that say, you know, wow, my taxes went up again for Wake County, why are my taxes went up again? I feel like if you got the information out of saying, this is what we have accomplished with that, that also helps. You know, you're showing what your taxes are actually doing. I think that helps out a lot of people, a lot of people's mindset.
Absolutely. And one of the things we've created this year is Affordable Housing Committee. And it has, it has a lot of folks just from the community on it. And again, we want that to kind of be a two-way communication tool for them to bring us feedback from what they're seeing in their communities, but also for them to share some of this. We can, you know, complete plans and the federal government makes us do reports, per annual performance reports and plans and data and tables all over the place. And we can post them all, you know, we run notifications in the various different newspapers, we post them in town halls, we post them in service facilities, but it's not as, you know, it's not as good as somebody just having kind of a person-to-person conversation about, hey, did you know this? And so we've got to figure out more ways to get, like you said, get that information out there.
Thoroughly depressed. Wow, thank you.
So I've taken up a lot of your time tonight. I really appreciate. I really appreciate the discussion and the thoughtful questions, and both myself and Mark are here, as well as Lorena, when she's feeling better, to to have any additional conversations with you and and to help in any way that we can.
Thank you.
Was your name in this? Your name's not inside of this here.
Alicia, is it Alicia?
It is Alicia, yes.
Do you have a card?
That's what I was going to say.
Yes, I can provide, I can provide you cards.
There's a, there's a contact.
Oh, yes, yes, sorry, it is.
I cannot see it.
Thank you. Yeah, so this is a list of our, what we call kind of our leadership team of all of our various different division directors, deputy directors and folks, but I'm happy to to leave cards with the clerk.
I was going to say, if we actually wanted to call you?
Yes, if you want to call us, I have my my cell and my office number.
And we promise not to give it to every person that we come across.
It's quite all right.
Both, if you have a card as well, since you didn't get a chance to speak.
I don't, but I'm happy to provide my contact. I'm new in this role, and so my cards aren't.
We know how to find you, okay.
Yeah, I'll I'll give you Mark's number, too.
All right, thank you.
His personal.
So Lorena is going to call me later on this week, and we're going to debrief. And we've talked a couple times already, and I feel like this could be a really nice subcommittee of the board working on this issue, whatever this issue is that we want to work on. And you heard from them, they have a lot more resources than we do as staff. And so I'm going to advocate to some extent, what could they do to work with a group of you to come together and talk about what do you want to do with Roseville as part of this? For instance, you, you know, you talked, you talked about property, we have property. And and can you help us, guide us through what to do with that property potentially? Do we, we don't have a plan. Does it make some sense to start talking about a housing plan for Roseville? Those type of aspects that I would like to kind of bring back a proposal to you all. And and then I don't think, personally, I don't think it takes all of you, but maybe it will be a couple of you to work with us and start working on some things, we can start getting this ball rolling a little bit more for Roseville. So if you're okay with that, I would like to engage on that conversation and maybe bring back some more information for you.
That's exactly what I was speaking with another mayor that they've done. She said because it's such a big conversation.
Right.
And trying to define it and narrow it down and where to start, it was becoming very challenging. So that's exactly.
I think you need, I think you need to take small bites and prioritize your bites.
Yeah, I'm overwhelmed. I was thinking it was going to get happier, and then it took a turn, and I was like, I just just can't believe that this is not just a law in America, that everybody has a basic right to housing. That's where I'm stuck. I am stuck there. I'm sitting there like, who am I writing in Congress? But anyway, I digress.
Yeah, and it's such a, just a complex issue of so many systems and things weaved together that it's it's not easily consumable.
Be a basic right, housing.
Yeah, but it, you know, the the solution to homelessness is a house. Simple as that.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Yeah, this was great.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item two, discussion of Wake County interlocal agreement to enforce non discrimination ordinance. And I noticed something David and myself and Kelly put a lot of time into it, and I'm going to turn it over to Dave.
Dave's here also, but just to kind of update you, I think in April, I looked back, April 19th, you talked about this in great detail, learned about it, and we can obviously spend more time on it tonight if you want to, but really, the only update you asked was come back in three months and see where this stood amongst Wake County, I think, and as you thought about it, and maybe talk to your colleagues. So I, the only real new information I have is what community effort has taken place since we last talked as far as the Wake County municipalities, and you saw my memo, I have updated that, and this came directly from Wake County staff as it relates. And again, let me just go through what other municipalities have done. Raleigh adopted prior to Wake County, Knightdale has adopted this, Morrisville's adopted, Cary adopted their own version, Apex adopted, Wendell adopted, Gardner adopted, and then Fuquay, Verena, and Zebulon will not adopt in current form, which means to me probably not adopt. And then Holly Springs and Wake Forest will not adopt. So you can see it's kind of split. In Wake County, it's kind of split. So tonight, I think we're ready for, if you have any further direction on this, everything's prepared and ready for your adoption. If you're interested, we could put it on the next meeting for adoption, or you can wait, or you can take no action.
I guess I'm just simple. I don't understand what the drama is. I really don't. Help me understand what the drama is, because I'm like, yes.
Why are some saying yes?
Right, why are some people saying no?
Well, so the question, any other question I had with that, too, was, I don't, I don't know how to phrase this nicely. If it's a great project, why didn't just Wake County take it and just say, this is our project, if you need help, here, you know, contact us directly? Why, why does it, and I know why it goes to each town, because it's to try to tie in each town to it, but if it's a, if it's a great project, why wasn't it headed up directly from as their project?
But isn't that because we're a municipality, just like all the rest of them, and Wake County's jurisdiction is not over us?
I think arguably, they are taking it on. They have, they have said, we're going to do this, and we're wanting you to participate in municipalities, and here's the agreement for you to join us.
To join.
But they can't make you, they can offer it to you.
That's right.
Right.
That's right.
But just help me understand the the no's. I heard the Holly Springs thing on the news, and that was pretty sad, but I want to understand what's the cons that people are.
Dave, do you want to talk from a legal perspective, what the cons are, and then I can try and fill out if there's anything further?
From a, from a legal perspective, the con that comes up most often among municipal attorneys is a question as to whether the authority exists to regulate the behaviors of these private parties. That is, there is no, there is no general statute that authorizes towns to engage in this regulation. However, there is a court case that calls into question the power of a town to do so. So the courts have already ruled once in the past, when Chapel Hill tried to do this, and ruled against the town of Chapel Hill on its non discrimination ordinance. However, the argument that Wake County makes and others do make is that this ordinance is different, can be distinguished, and perhaps a court would uphold it if it were challenged. So that is the, the legal issue is that this is questionable legal territory.
Can you give details on the Chapel Hill scenario?
Or can you say it in layperson's terms? That was the legal, can you break it down?
The the most simple, the most simple reason a town might rule, decide not to adopt this is that the town doesn't want to get sued.
Yeah, there we go.
That's, that's breaking it down.
Yeah.
How about that?
That's better.
What was the outcome for Chapel Hill?
Chapel Hill lost, and their ordinance was set aside.
Is it same or different?
So they no longer have the ordinance, or they just?
They no longer have the ordinance, and the ordinance is different. It was worded differently, and Wake County worked to write the new ordinance in a way that they hope would survive scrutiny.
So, but if if someone is challenged, any of the municipalities challenged, then Wake County through, I think it's Campbell University, has said that they will litigate everything as a, as a, I guess as a group rather than individual town? Is that correct?
That, that's not exactly correct. So if there is a complaint raised against an employer or a public accommodation, that complaint will be resolved under the agreement in a collaborative way or in a conciliation way with the assistance of the mediation skills and tools of Campbell Law School. If there were to be a challenge to Wake County's ordinance, the defense of the Wake County ordinance would be by whomever was named in the lawsuit. So the way it is now written, Wake County would presumably always be named and would be responsible for bearing the cost of the litigation. However, if the town is also named, it is responsible for bearing its own costs.
So you're saying the only way to get around that is to get on board with this ordinance?
No, you'd say off of it, if you don't want to get sued, yeah.
Okay.
So the other question?
That, that's the issue. Now, the question is whether there would be a legal challenge at all, so long as the ordinance was always set up as it currently is, such that resolving a complaint is always done in a voluntary way with the assistance of Campbell Law School. There is a certain amount of a practical risk mitigation baked into the new ordinance that keeps someone who has a complaint raised against them from being someone who would have to maybe necessarily defend themselves in court or in a public venue. It would be private.
And by discrimination, we're talking about protected classes? Is that specifically?
Correct. Protected classes as defined in the non discrimination, in the non discrimination ordinance, which took a broader view than either state or federal law currently sets out.
By any chance, do you know, because I see that it said Cary adopted their own version, do you know by any chance the difference in the Wake County ordinance versus Cary's?
I had thought it was Apex. Kelly is, was it Apex or Cary?
It says Cary.
Cary is what I understand.
Cary, Cary, like Raleigh, was moving on its own path to adopt a non discrimination ordinance. I believe the language may have related to the definition of protected class.
Okay.
Do you know why Wake Forest said no?
I do not.
Yeah, I can, the the council did not want, they felt like the businesses in in Wake Forest wasn't participating in discrimination, they didn't want to put any future litigations on the, because the the businesses that want to be sued is part of that, too, right? You know, so, you know, if we have a business in town that is determined to be discrimination in that business, and I guess the anti lawsuits have come against us, but lawsuits go both ways, is that right, Dave?
It's a complaint, though, it's not a lawsuit.
Yeah.
Correct. An allegation that's raised under the ordinance would only, if if an allegation were raised against a Roseville business, or we'll say Roseville business, the matter would be resolved with the private mediation setting of Campbell Law School. If however, a business were to object to ever having been named and were to go to court to set the ordinance aside, that would be something that Wake County and presumably whatever town was also named would then have to decide how to defend.
How often is this done? How many, how often are there discrimination suits, I mean, that are on the record that you are aware of?
There, there aren't any in 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 this setting. This is a, this is a new idea. Currently, these matters are resolved either under the state or federal non discrimination laws that I'm sure we're all familiar with, including the Civil Rights Act.
Yeah, that, you know, I think, I think this adds a, a, another layer of legality as David was starting, because right now, I say a business, let's say a school discriminates against a student or something, you know, if it doesn't, if it's not illegal, David investigated, and it's not an illegal activity, then, you know, it's handled between the school and the parents and stuff. I think this could get us more involved in those type of situations if it's not resolved internally. Is that right, David, or you see it set differently?
I don't know, it would come up in that setting exactly, but let's, let's imagine this were a complaint raised against a patron at a local business who felt that they were being targeted by the owner of the local business. They would file a complaint on a form that Wake County has now placed on their website. Wake County would then contact the business and the person who had filed the complaint and would route them to Campbell Law School. And from there, you know, the parties will decide what they'd like to do to resolve that. The ordinance presumes they would like to work it out quietly, but we don't, we don't know that that's the case. It's, it's my expectation that these sorts of ordinances will end up in court in one way or the other.
But does this require it to be mediated first? Is that what it's doing?
Yes.
Okay.
The, the parties will decide whatever they want to do. The, the ordinance really wants everyone to work in a cooperative way to resolve these matters. It's a very non punitive structure that has been proposed.
So for the municipalities that are not adopting this, if there is an issue that arises, what happens without Wake County?
Wake County won't be able to enforce the ordinance within their jurisdiction.
Right, so then what, so then what happens? If there's no Wake County ordinance, what happens? The citizens are on their own, unless it's a federal.
Citizens would have access to federal and state law discrimination laws, but not municipal or county.
Yeah, you can come up like EEO and those type of things, maybe.
Right, kind of federal stuff. I think it's courage, and I think that if businesses are discriminating, then they should be called out, and they shouldn't be discriminating, right? And protected classes are pretty, pretty easy, been around for a long time, and I think it gives an added layer of protection. We just talked about diversity in housing and how it's the people being displaced, it's a diversity issue, and a lot of times, it's people that have less money and less resources that are discriminated against and don't have anyone to help them. I am for it, and I hope our businesses aren't discriminating, and I don't think they are, but I do think it's a nice added layer of protection, and it takes courage for us to stand up and say, we support our businesses, but we also support our citizens being treated fairly.
Okay, I think, I think I'll ask for a question on this. So anybody, anybody want to make a motion one way or the other? We'll, we probably need to resolve it, I don't think we need to keep going, so.
Your choice.
So I'm going to, I'm going to ask for a question on it.
You want a motion?
You asking for a question or a motion?
Is that a question?
Question is a motion.
Oh.
Okay, so wait, I'm going to, I just want to go back to what.
We can make the motion and then.
Commissioner Sutton said, I'm sorry for. So basically, when, when we do this, what if that business is guilty, right? Is that for the town? So there's three, three meeting of the minds here?
We don't get involved.
Oh, we don't get, I mean, by signing.
If you, if you approve this, the processes that the, we would direct them to the county site if we got a call. They are on their own filling out the complaint, and then they enter into the, essentially the channels of Wake County, because we have endorsed this effort, and they have the opportunity to follow that complaint with this process with Wake County, and it starts the conciliatory voluntary effort investigation, essentially.
Versus the town getting involved?
Town will never ever get involved, period, either way.
On sign.
That's right, because we, we do not get involved in federal or state cases, nor will we get involved in this.
Unless we're named in a lawsuit.
That's right.
Oh, I thought there, okay, so I was so confused. I thought you were kind of saying that if we agree to this, then.
There is an opportunity then for our, anybody who wants to have a complaint against anybody in Roseville, business or such, to use this process. If we do not participate, they have not access to this process to can seek voluntary conciliation and actively use a federal or state.
So they will not have access to it.
That's right.
So this is giving them the, another option, another way to go.
This gives them the opportunity to file a complaint through the Wake County process.
You mentioned something I hadn't picked up on before. I thought, I thought it was just for businesses, but you're saying a neighbor versus a neighbor can file?
I don't know, what do you think, Dave? Is it, who is it? Is it any, what, what kind of cases can it be? Is it just businesses, or is it, let's go back to?
The, the, the Wake County non discrimination ordinance identifies employers and public accommodations.
Yes, sorry.
So it wouldn't be neighbor against neighbor?
No, that's right.
Thank God.
Okay, so by signing it, we're giving them an extra resource, basically.
Sure.
Okay. My gosh, I think we just kept running around the corner on this.
I think the only thing that stood out to me besides that was the, the cost involved. If we agree to it, I would definitely want us to review it after the timeframe they have, but I'd also want to see. but I'd also want to see the results of it. You know, is it really, is it really an issue? Is there something that needs to be changed? We need to go our own way with it and just not let it roll just because we agreed to it this time, next time? Just to make sure it's, it's better? Yeah, there's renewals after it. Right now, it's, the cost is covered by Wake County.
Yeah, I think, in fact, I think they've offered for at least the next year and a half. But then, you're right, that's one question that most of everybody has raised is then, let's say fiscal year 25, 26.
Right.
What's that cost could be? Well, it'd be a budgetary consideration, and you probably would ask, is it worth it?
Right.
And you'd probably ask for some metrics and the results of whether you're getting the value for it.
And if we need to go a different route, like if Cary went a different way, or whoever went a different way, and theirs is better, then maybe we, we go that way too.
It's not, it's not infinite. You could always pass up and says, we're done.
Right.
Because there's some reason this came about. This wasn't just they sat down and somebody went, oh, let's do this.
So the primary reason, from Wake County's perspective, promotion wise, is for economic development purposes. It makes a positive statement for Wake County, they believe, to show that we have a place of employers' ability to work.
But I'm saying, something happened.
Well, and that may be the case, that may be the case.
Guidelines come about because a situation happened.
Yeah, I've not heard a specific reason.
We may never know what it was, but.
I think the biggest thing, Sheila, it's kind of like Kelly's saying, for Raleigh, Cary, and Wake County as a whole, some of these corporate intenities, these, these national things, they look for these type of things to bring their conference to you.
I thought this was supposed to be the opposite of the HB1 bill. I thought there was something to do with that prior, and that's what brought this about.
Well, I, I think, I think if it's connected, it's loosely connected, you know?
Right. Well, it's just like, that one went one way.
Yeah, I think that bill turned off the corporate people. I think this one turns them back on.
Right.
We'll eventually get to the middle.
Yeah.
All right, I'll call for a question. I almost heard a motion there, but.
I'll make a motion to sign on with the, I don't even know how to make a motion, but I'm gonna say, I move to sign on with the Wake County nondiscrimination ordinance that's presented to us.
To approve the ILA.
Oh, to approve the ILA.
Do we have to add the, do we have to add the review to it as well for the, after a year?
I think that's built in.
Okay, all right.
In other words, I don't think you do a renewal. You said a renewal.
Okay.
You can do an op out anytime you want to, I think. Ain't that right, David? Anytime you want to, you can op out. You just don't have, it's sort of like you get a subscription or something? You always have it unless you opt out, you know? They're always going to send you a bill.
If you pay the bill, that's right.
You know, always send you a bill to opt out. So I got a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
I got a motion and a second, is any other discussion?
Oh, I was gonna say, I like your idea of reviewing it.
Mm-hmm.
Makes sense.
All right, any other discussion? Not all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? I don't, I think it was unanimous. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Boyd. That's one you can, check off your list, Kelly. I know we've been, I, I think, I think we, we spent a lot of time on it, but I think, I think that was, it's such as divided thing in Wake County, I think it was, it was needed. And, you know, as Dave says, it's not a tremendous amount of downside to it. I mean, it's, you know, it's, if it is, then we'll opt out of it later, but appreciate it, Boyd, thank you. Wake County Library Memorandum of Understanding.
Okay, so another Wake County item. This is the, kind of the results, one of the results of your purchase of the 17 acre tract of land that you bought on East Young Street. If you remember when we bought that land, we went through a kind of a due diligence effort, and two of those questions that we wanted to ask ourselves before we bought that land was, A, would Wake County potentially locate a library there? And B, could accommodate several town facilities, including a library? And the answer was to both those questions, yes. So you bought the property. So since then, we've been meeting with Wake County staff to try and initiate the planning effort for that site, because you kind of need to now further plan. We did our due diligence to make sure it accommodated, but now we actually now need to start seeing how we would place infrastructure, buildings and such on that site so it can be used. So with that in mind, our first partner in this, besides ourselves, is with Wake County, and so this MOU is the attempt to try and confirm our relationship with Wake County to say that we're going to work together to jointly plan this parcel together. And so some of the highlights of this MOU talks about that we're, we're going to start calling this, and you obviously could all change this, but we're trying to figure out whether we call this, and we're going to call it Town Campus for purposes of MOU. That this Town Campus will include a commitment by Wake County potentially of up to a 12,000 square foot library building and associated parking. Now, that is their bigger library. That's not the 8,000 municipal size library. The 12,000 is more of the regional size. What, they don't know what they're gonna build there yet, but they want to make sure they have the opportunity to build a regional library if that's what they're sort of inclined to do. It's a commitment by us and them spending up to $100,000 during this effort to kind of program and also participate in where that library could be located and how it could be relation, relationship to the Town Campus. And then our commitment would be, we would spend up, and you have already budgeted, up to $400,000 over a period of time to lead the site planning of the campus site, which includes the Public Services Building, Town Hall, and any other related facilities, which could be many, potentially, and use that to also start engaging ourselves on maybe picking one of those buildings and start programming and make sure we're getting the right size for whatever our priority buildings we want on that space also in that facility. It really starts moving this along. We would like to get this MOU calls out that we would start this process by the start of 2023, and by the end, if not sooner, of 2023, we would have a good schematic design with some pretty good layouts of how that Town Campus is going to accommodate various municipal buildings and the library, and then allows us to then start our planning efforts diligently for what potentially could be our first building or two on that site, and it also allows the county to go off and start their effort on funding this through a bond somewhere in the 2025 period with them starting to look at constructing a library in 2026 or being open with the library in 2026. So it's, it's detail, how we're gonna relate together, we're gonna work together. It doesn't commit anything beyond that. It does not commit to things like who, whether the library's gonna own the land. They typically don't. They typically go on locations where they lease land and are famous 99 years for $1. We've now familiar with in some ways, we've heard about.
Don't believe it when you hear it.
Or, or such.
Right.
But, but what it does do is really kind of firms up the Town Campus, and it really starts laying the groundwork for things like grant opportunities or anything else, or how we're going to spend our money, and really prioritize our funding along with the county so they can say that they're going to, ready to build a library in Roseville when they get the money to do that. So that's what this is all about. They were going to schedule, Wake County was going to schedule it today, but they came back from the summer break and had a big agenda, so they are now postponing that till September 6th. Staff feels comfortable that they are going to consider affirmatively, but they don't know that yet. So tonight's your night to answer any questions or ask any questions and.
We don't know who we're gonna hire as a vendor.
No, so what we would do is go off then, when this is all completed, we would immediately start our request for qualifications and go through a selection process.
Yeah, and in that process, let's be sure we get some steps in there for community involvement.
In the selection of the vendor?
No, in the vendor developing the site.
Oh, okay. As far as how, community input on that?
Yeah, sort of like a, sort of like we did Main Street, you know? We, we had open, we had some open times, people could come in and comment, I like that, I don't like that, I don't, you know?
Yeah.
That type of thing.
There will be, I think one of the important exercises in my mind, and we'll, we'll firm this up with you, but I do think one of the important exercises we'll want to do is what are our priorities?
Right.
Right? Because I mean, it's a pretty blank slate out there. I want to make sure we've got our priorities straight too. And, and so not only layout, but then also the priorities of what we want to start addressing now, so.
Are we at the point with consultants where we've bought so many, we get like the punch card? Where we could get like some discounted rates? Because I feel like we use a lot of consultants. It's time for them to give back to Roseville, just saying, Kelly.
I have a feeling this probably is gonna be a different type of consultant we've used before.
It's more like a site design engineering.
Yeah, yeah. They're gonna have some, there's, there's probably gonna be one very significant planning slash planning consultant who will bring in potentially a team of specialists, like they might have a, somebody who is good on police services to help them through that, or town halls. So it's gonna be a pretty big effort. Now, Wake County, they have a groups, groups that they have already kind of pre-qualified, so their selection process is gonna be pretty quick. They, they'll pull on half dozen that have already, they've worked with and related with and have qualified. We don't have any such, we'll make it very open.
There was a guy at, was it Stewart?
Stewart, yep.
Maybe Stewart. I saw him in Wilmington. He was phenomenal.
Yeah, in fact.
Just with, just the whole, oh my gosh, it was mind blowing.
Stewart's really good, in fact, they're the ones that helped us a little bit on the veterans, folks, I think they'll probably be, somebody be their.
He was awesome, though.
This is just for the land design, right?
Well, so it's, it's, it's land, it's sort of layout, and then you got to make sure you know where the infrastructure, right? So where, where do you lay out some of the infrastructure? Where's water, sewer, and roads gonna go? Parking gonna go?
Right.
So that, yeah.
But when it comes to the building, then that would be more specific as to.
That's right. They'll, they'll bring, they'll probably have a specialist for police, police services building.
Right, and for the library, aren't they very specific on how their libraries are built, their county libraries?
What's that?
For the library.
Uh-huh.
Aren't they very specific on how the libraries have to be built?
You know, that's so interesting. They have, they have some non-negotiables, I think.
Right, okay.
So number of spaces, entryway features, such like that, but I do get a sense they're open for some new models of libraries potentially.
Okay, because they do.
They are, they are pretty, all pretty cookie cutter right now. Yeah.
Okay, and this can be added to the consent agenda.
If you're ready, we can add the consent agenda.
Okay, and any questions, because there's gonna be a consent agenda coming up.
I just want to make sure we get someone who is forward thinking and broad when it comes to design, and I really like what I heard from that group. Because if you think about, we're incorporating this into our downtown.
Right.
Because this is all gonna be connected, so it can't just be this tunnel vision.
Right.
Yeah.
Fair enough, good.
Yep, I'm good.
But then they all have to work together, because otherwise it's gonna look so completely opposite, you know, like they're designing this way.
Huh? It's gonna have to be an orchestration?
Yeah, it really does.
Yeah, Stewart is very.
I love that guy.
All right, well, thanks, Boyd. The next thing up is the ARP Act Fund with Amy, and I think Amy will take a break. This is a good time, we've been two hours almost. So let's reconvene at 8:05, and it'd be up, you know, you, you got the floor at 8:05.
Give me time to transition.
Give me time to transition.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. We have talked about the American Rescue Plan Act several times. Each time we get, take that conversation a little bit further. And we are within sight of the, the end goal with this conversation. So hopefully with this, we can answer some of the final questions that you might have and get things wrapped up with this entire project. So I do, I think it's helpful to kind of reframe everything. So you've seen a lot of these slides I'm about to go through before. But it's always helpful to kind of get re-grounded in how we got where we are. So one is the American Rescue Plan Act. It was federal legislation passed in March of 2021 that allocates $1.9 trillion to aid the response and recovery to the coronavirus pandemic. What we are most concerned with in our conversation here is the piece of pie that is sort of green with the yellow star. And that is the funds that are paid directly to state and local governments. That state and local funding went directly to states, directly to counties, directly to the cities. In North Carolina, you can see the breakdown on the right-hand side of this slide. The state of North Carolina got 5.4 billion. Cities under 50,000, like Roseville, overall across the state, 705 million. Town of Roseville itself received an allocation of $2.7 million.
And 96 cents.
Yeah, I rounded up. I figured I'll pay the three cents myself of, just to get to 2.47. So, so that's the funding that's been allocated. When they passed this legislation, they gave the US Treasury the responsibility to set out all the guidelines for how this money should be spent. And so in January of 2022, almost a year after the legislation was passed, US Treasury came out with their final rules about how, what are the guidelines and regulations about how to spend this money? They came up with basically four or five, depending on how you categorize this, categories of allowable expenditures. The one that's the most important for us is the one in green, the replaced, place lost revenue. Those, that final rule says that you can claim up to $10 million of lost revenue, no further questions asked. So for communities that receive $10 million or less, that was the most obvious choice. And that is what Roseville selected for its use for the ARPA funds. So what, what we would intend to do with this is so you can use that, that lost revenue to provide government services. And that's basically anything that state law allows you to do, which means that all of our operations fall under that revenue replacement qualification. Our partners across the state, those with the League of Municipalities, the county commissioners, the school of government, et cetera, have looked into this in a lot of detail. And they advise that the option that has the easiest documentation requirements is to reimburse yourself for salary and benefit costs. And so staff, we have gone ahead and a stack, and it's about a stack of paper this big, gone through and documented $2.7 million worth of salary costs that the town has already paid to employees so that we are prepared to reimburse ourselves and claim the $2.7 million in ARPA funds. Now, as we all know, federal money often comes with federal requirements. And ARPA is no difference. That final rule declared that the spending of this money has to be in conformance with what is called Uniform Guidance. And Uniform Guidance is a standard set of rules and requirements for federal financial awards. These seven that are listed here are what would apply if we're using the salaries and benefits selection to reimburse ourselves. So we're going to run through those briefly. The first one, have a financial management system. Check, we are good there. We have a reliable system that documents and maintains all financial transactions. Two, internal controls procedures. Check, we have that, we're good. We have some internal finance department, internal controls. We set out things like what are the risk assessment? What are some control activities? Who monitors, who's responsible? How do we segregate duties? The next one is one of the items that's in your packet. It's a records retention policy. And so that is one of the first resolutions in your packet. Pretty simple, straightforward. The final rule does say that records must be kept five years after, after this program ends. So we would have to keep that stack of paper through the end of December of 2031. So that's what you're adopting if you were to adopt that resolution. The second resolution you have there is an eligible use policy. What that does is it, well, the particular one that's in your packet is it, it puts the responsibility on the finance director to ensure that the proposed project, which is to reimburse salary and benefits, is eligible under the grant. That's all that, that is essentially doing. The third policy is an allowable cost, right? So you know, okay, salaries and benefits are eligible under the grant. But now it gets a little more specific. What types of salaries are eligible under there? If you dig into Uniform Guidance, for example, you find out very quickly that vehicle allowances are not eligible. When you start getting to that really specific level. And so that's what that allowable cost policy is. Again, it's putting the responsibility on the finance director to make sure that all of the costs that we submit for those salaries and benefits are actually, are actually allowable under this grant. The next, I think that's the sixth one down on the list, is a, is civil rights compliance. This is required. And it basically, it's a resolution adopting a policy that the town will follow federal statutes and regulations. We already do that, but this pretty much just codifies it to meet the federal requirements. The last thing they require is a conflict of interest policy in Uniform Guidance. I have a copy in your packet there, our current purchasing policy that you've adopted and recently revised about, about a year ago? Or no, earlier this year revised. It already has a conflict of interest policy in there. And so it already meets Uniform Guidance requirements. So there's no additional policy needed there. So all of those are included in your packet. So what are the next steps to claim the funds? Two things. One would be to adopt all of those resolutions and adopt the policies required by Uniform Guidance. Once those policies are adopted, then you would want to adopt what's called a grant project ordinance. Right? We've talked over the budget process about a capital project ordinance, right? That's where you adopt an ordinance that sets out a budget that doesn't expire after one year, stays in place for the life of the project. Right? That's the same thing, a grant project is the same thing. It's just with grant money instead of town funds. Okay? But this grant project ordinance won't last very long because again, we have already assembled the documentation, you've already met the requirements. So as soon as that grant project ordinance is adopted, we can transfer the money from this special ARPA fund into your general fund. And it will be ready to spend at your discretion. So questions about any of the policies, any of the big picture things?
Amy, can you, for the board, did the, all these resolutions come? What's the source for these resolutions?
Yes, thank you.
And such?
Sure, so let's see, yeah, all, all four. It is four, right? Yes, all four of those resolutions came from the school of government. They have, you know, plenty of attorneys and graduate students available. They've really, they dove into the Uniform Guidance and drafted some sample policies. Obviously, they're trying to write policies that work for a community of 200,000 population and 2,000 population. And so it's a, it's a skeleton they give you and you kind of adopt it based on what you need. So that's what was the basis of that. We did send these to our town attorney's office and had them review as well. Very exciting stuff, isn't it?
Ready to be put on consent agenda in the next meeting if the board is so inclined.
I'm good.
I say yes.
We've heard it a couple times.
What a wonderful change.
All right, very good, thank you all.
Thank you, Amy. Good job, appreciate that.
It's just a, it's just a one time in our life.
Oh, okay. And COVID had nothing to do with it?
Well, trying to get political.
You had to deal with the shutdown.
In my life, at least.
That's why inflation is so high right now. All that free money that came out.
Okay, next item, Mayor?
Next item is discussion of Granite Acres connection feasibility in the 30% preliminary design.
Continuation, this, this is a continuation of a conversation. I sent you a memo back in November of 2021. They gave you kind of a summary of this informal path that has been developed over time between Granite Acres subdivision and Granite Falls Boulevard that has primarily, is primarily used by schoolchildren attending Sanford Creek Elementary School. I think most all of you are familiar with this path now and had a chance to look at it. It crosses over two private parcels, land owned by the Granite Acres ownership and then also the Granite Falls HOA. It's about 200 length, 200 feet in length. It does cross a Blue Lion stream and there's a pretty steep slope from Granite Falls Boulevard. So at behest of a few board members and mayor, we received a proposal from our engineering firm of what it would take to kind of study the feasibility of building this out into more of a formal trail, like a public greenway. And what would that take to do that? And so the proposal that you have in your consideration is for $23,500. And it would essentially study and do some feasibility and then ultimately some design work to come up with what the conclusions would take to build a public greenway trail in there that could be used for all the public. And would eliminate essentially a trespassing situation now. And as I said in my memo, one of the things, efforts I did try to accomplish in the last two weeks was reach out to both private landowners and ask them first if they support the idea. And secondly, if we would have permission to enter the property for the study if we needed to. And then third, if they would support ultimately recording right-of-way document or such that they would give right-of-way for this purpose of the trail if this was ever to be accomplished. The private landowner, the Green Acres owner said we had permission to enter the property, but they wanted to make it clear that they're not certain. They support the greenway yet. They want to see what the study says. And they certainly would not, at least at this point, commit to any kind of granted of right-of-waysment until they saw first what was designed. And secondly, that they would be, a right-of-way provided by them would essentially remove all liability for that greenway to be built, maintained, anything associated with it down the line for it.
You talked to the attorney, right?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, she, she would have, it's a she, right?
She, Ricky, R.I.K.K.I.
It's a male name, but Ricky, I think that's right.
Right.
She, she would have to take it back to her board that she reports to and get permission. But last time I talked to her, she didn't like the situation. It was there today.
Right.
And you know, they'd understand today they could get lawsuits.
Right.
And I, I think, you know, they would be. And I think, you know, they would be favorable once she takes it back.
I think so. The Heritage HOA responded back saying, yes, they were supportive very much of the study. Sorry, excuse me. Granite Falls HOA said very much they were supportive of the study, that we'd have access. And in fact, anything we needed of their files, they would provide to us. And that they would obviously be interested in the right of way dedication if it made sense. They do have this one condition that requires four fifths of a membership or 64 homes in the HOA to agree to a right of way dedication, which was similar, if you remember, we did with the Heritage Trail component. They had to have membership approval of that, too. Then they went on and said, and we really wanted to get this done. They are very concerned of the situation as it stands today. They have put no trespassing signs on that path. They're concerned about the stability of the existing structure that crosses the creek or Blue Stream right now. So I think they're very encouraged by this and then would encourage whomever to try and pursue to get something done as soon as possible. So I think we're ready to, if you're ready tonight to approve, it would take a budget amendment and a capital construction ordinance probably be suitable. At your next meeting, we'd have those ready for your consideration so that we can engage in this and get started on this.
So this is a small pro, well, it's starting small. I don't know how small it'll stay, cost wise. But I see we're using Withers Ravine now?
Yes, they are our on-call engineering firm.
So this isn't something we would put out to bid?
I just.
No, it's, we did that about a year and a half ago. And we have a town engineer who does our development review. And then Withers does all our capital. We'll put those out next year again.
When it's time to do it.
Yes.
I got you. Okay. I just want to make sure.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Kelly, the total cost of 23,500, all right, for test three, 30% of the design work. Would this price for 15,000, is that going to be flat? Or is there another cost associated for the other 70%?
So that buys you 30% design. When the day comes that you want to do this, you'll have to pay for a 70% complete design, including what the right of way exactly will be needed and such like that. So there will be further engineering required from this ultimately. This gets you to a point where you hopefully will be able to see the design generally and generally understand some probability of costs. And that can be then used for grants or anything like that or budgeting purposes. But there is going to be further engineering required.
Is there a way that they could probably give us the estimate for that? So that way that when Amy started adjusting the budget, it's already can be taken care of?
I think this will give you the estimate. And also, you know, there's others involved in this. Wake County Schools and Wake County Board of Commissioners. And I got a note from Heather that says, you know, once we get this feasibility studied, she has some good ideas at DEMA. I don't know how DEMA can help out. But DEMA and possible grants that I hadn't considered before. It's always been, once, to build it, it'd be a joint effort by Roseville, Wake County and Wake County School Board.
Okay.
So, but it's really fluffy until we know whether it's a hundred thousand dollars or a million dollars and, you know.
Thanks, sir.
Yeah, the 30% will get you a budget, budget number.
It'll get you a good budget, I think. Well, it used to get you a good budget. Right, you see this way.
Right.
But it'll lay out all the requirements needed. It'll lay out the area that you need for the right of way. And it'll lay out these steps, including the rest of engineering plus the construction costs.
Will we get options? I'm always like, sometimes they come back this one little way and you're just like, well, what else you got?
I think Derek came up with some options. But I think the engineering is going to be the most cost-effective way, probably.
I'm just saying.
I would think so.
Yeah, I think your other thing, too, is like, so your 30% is going to be like a cartoon, basically. But you don't want to, I wouldn't go and pay for the 70%. I would take the 30% to all our partners and say, all right, let's go now. You know, we could share the cost on this because there's going to be other options. Like, can you turn it this way? Can you turn it that way? This, that, yeah. So, yeah, right.
But it is a risk. I mean, you know, I haven't got clear feedback whether Heather or Sig would help with this $23,000 or not. They always say, you get this preliminary drawing done and then we'll work and get it paid for.
Sig's leave.
Okay.
So can we get this done tomorrow? I'm just saying, we got short time to work with.
And remember, you know, that's easy money if we go through them. But if we touch federal money, it makes it more difficult project. So it's just really, I don't know where the source of funds are going to come from.
Yeah, I don't know if we go through Campo or not. Campo is struggling right now with overruns and costs. And it has to be a very high priority to go through them. And I think it's going to be local funded. We do this, it'll be local funded for sure.
And we also have added this to our greenway plan that we adopted as well.
Derek did.
Yeah, it's already added to it, so. And no matter what's there, you know, regardless if that stays the same for 20 years or somebody comes in and buys that and does something different, you're still going to want access to that school from there. You're always going to have kids that go to that school. So walking them around, you know, this neighborhood or walking along West Young, which is getting more and more crowded. I don't think you want to do that. So I feel like that's the best.
We'll find a way, even little students. They will find a way.
True.
According to Heather, there's 70 kids that goes to that school from the home park.
Wow.
And they're walkable because I'm the neighborhood behind that. And we're walkable. We don't, there's no bus service. It's walkable from, yeah, yeah.
That's just the elementary school. They include the high school and middle school.
No, it's just they're walking across this path. This path is used to get from.
Just to the elementary school.
Yeah, just from, yeah, Granite.
I say that because, I guess it doesn't matter. So I say who goes to pick up their siblings or whatever. But it doesn't matter.
Safety first.
Right.
Rather work on it than have a news report.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll put the next, all the items required to get this accomplished on the September 6th agenda.
Yeah, I think we need to move quick.
Yeah, definitely.
Move quick while we got some cooperation.
Sounds good. Did someone get a sheet for the closed executive session?
I didn't.
Did we lose Dave?
Is Dave there? Oh. Oh, yeah. Your turn.
All right. I move that the board go into closed session to consult with the town attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to Chapter 143, Section 318 dot 11 Alpha 3, Section 3 of the North Carolina General Statutes. Among other items, the board exempt, oh, I'm sorry, expects to receive counsel regarding the following intimate domain proceedings, Roseville versus Gillis.
All right, I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made and a second is any other discussion? And not all, all in favor of vote, yes?
Yes.
Any opposes?
You're changing up the words.
All right. We are in closed session.
He was seeing if we were awake.
Yes, he was. I'm like, say yes.
Y'all was, y'all had eyes in your mind.
I did.
Rice, let me switch you out.
I'm going to ask a question. What do you mean? What's the question? Oh, a motion. What the heck? I have to text somebody. I don't even know if I texted the question.
... meeting?
She has to get you on video, I think, before we go out of open session.
Okay, we are back into regular sessions from closed session. There was no decisions made. Any other topics from the board before we adjourn? Kelly, anything for me? All right.
Just real quick, I just wanted to mention, I thought we were going to add like a youth council or add some youth to some of our boards and I just wanted us to start thinking about that. That was it.
Anything else?
No, sir.
All right. If I don't hear an opposition, I'm adjourned to meeting. Thank you very much.